I call the regular, well, actually, I call the special calendar hearing meeting for the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Murman?
Here.
Mr. Bergner's absent, but we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. I understand you have a report for us on this year and next year's calendar.
Thank you.
Do you want me to get set up? So, we used to have a waiver to use legal school holidays for attendance. And the waiver process has been changed to having board hearings to allow the community to participate in giving input on such things like that. So, in the past and in the future, we are planning on using Veterans Day and Casimir Pulaski Day for school attendance. And as one of the five, two of the five school holidays, we want to give the public a chance to speak to that. To commemorate these holidays, certainly Veterans Day, we do quite a big deal at the school. And Casimir Pulaski as well gets mentioned in social studies venues and other places throughout the day, as well as the morning announcements. So, I'd ask maybe if you're up for it, we could have a chance for public participation on this topic.
Okay, is there an overhead that was up there briefly, or no?
Next topic.
Okay. Is there any discussion, board members? You all had the opportunity to see the proposed changes. As Mr. Hendrickson pointed out, previously, we had to obtain a waiver to get these two holidays off. We no longer have to do that, but it does require a vote of the Board of Education, and that's why we have to hold a special meeting. So, any comments?
It's not getting the two holidays off, it's using the holidays as school days.
That's correct, using the holidays.
We've always, we've always had school on these two holidays, as I understand it, or almost always.
Yep.
This is just the first time we haven't had to go through the waiver process in order to make it happen. Do I have a motion? Hearing no comments?
And we want a chance for public to comment on this.
Sorry, that will happen.
I will, thank you. So, we have no other further business for the-
If we don't have any public participation, we just have an adjournment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Any opposed? Consider the meeting adjourned. I now call the regular meeting of the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Snoblen?
Here.
Mr. Block? Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Bergner? He's sorry, he's absent. Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Murman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, I'm not Todd Bergner. Unfortunately, he had to be out of town on business, and so you're stuck with me for tonight. So, we'll make the best of it, and I think it'll go pretty smoothly. We don't have a terribly full agenda. I apologize that we were a little late in getting started, and I apologize that we had to go through that calendar hearing to begin with, just as a formality by state law. But now, we're ready to roll. I'll keep the president's report very short. President Bergner mentioned at our last meeting that we had engaged a consulting firm to help us with visioning, mission statement, setting new goals. It's the first time we've been through sort of a top-to-bottom effort here in over a That kicked off, actually, about two months ago, as President Bergner commented. But we did have a very important meeting all day last Sunday with the board, the senior administrative team, and some teacher representatives. And as I say, we spent the full day tossing around ideas, developing consensus around what we all felt Lake Forest High School should strive for, and I think we made great progress. And I think Superintendent Simic's going to comment on some of the further steps down the road regarding community meetings and further staff meetings and that sort of thing. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Simic.
Thank you very much. I've got all sorts of good things to report in the superintendent's report, and I'd like to hand off to Mr. Rogers. We have a line up, quite literally, in the back of the room for us, I think, to begin with.
Thank you, Superintendent Simic. I'm going to pass the microphone over to our class president, Kate Wally. And I just wanted to say, as a brief introduction to Kate, Kate is someone who lives the Scout experience to the fullest. She's involved in so many activities. But I think what I really want to point out is she's really taken leadership at the school, for student leadership, to a whole new level. And so Kate's going to tell you a little bit about some of the great things that are happening now at the school. So, Kate?
Just a couple of updates. The annual Turnabout Dance was held on January 25th in the Commons and Competition Gym. The theme this year was Big Blue Igloo. All grades were invited to attend, and we had the largest turnout this year with over 850 students at the dance. The winter play, Time of My Life, was performed January 30th through February 1st in the David Miller Theater. The students involved included seven talented actors, two student directors, and the tech crew. They all put on a great performance and are now moving on to this year's Spring Musical Suite charity. Auditions were held this past weekend for the APT Talent Show, You Ain't Seen Nothing Yet. The show will run March 5th through 8th and features 20 student acts. Emotional Wellness Day was last Wednesday, February 5th. Part of the day included a fun fair in the Commons, presenter and yo-yo artist Mark Hayward, and culminated in students breaking out into student-led, small groups discussing the effects and impacts of social media. And we are very excited to announce and congratulate the varsity dance team on their first-place win at the UDA National Championship in Florida. The team placed first in large varsity palms, making them back-to-back national champions. So, congratulations to Ansley Ashmore, Abby Bertram, Katie Bertram, Margot Dempsey, Rachel Gay, Sidney Gold, Jessie Henham, Claire Klapchrosky, Jenny Lepman, Claire Milligan, Maddie Neal, Margaret Nemecus, Emily Poth, Claire Rankenmeyer, Maddie Sheridan, Nicolette Stern, Cheyenne Tilford, and Sarah Kueppmeyer. Congratulations, ladies and co-
So, at this time, I would like to ask their outstanding coach, Nikki Lazareto, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, maybe with some of your athletes, say a few words.
You just push this? You don't have to, okay. Hi, I'm Nikki Lazareto. I've been coaching the varsity palm team for, this is my third year. Last year, we became national champions for the very first time in the history of the dance program, or the dance team program. And this year, we went back, and I'd like to say to defend our title, but the girls' focus and my focus was really just to go back and be stronger than we were last year and to beat last year's team, who won, which was us. And, because that's what you usually do. So, our goal was to be stronger, and we scored a 90 last year, and this year, we scored a 94, which at Nationals is huge. You're up against the best teams in the country. And last year, we took out a team who has won 10 years in a row, and they were not happy, and so they were ready to come back and take their title back, but it didn't happen. So, we're super excited that the girls excelled and stuck with their goals, and they were, and I'm mostly really proud of how they represented Lake Forest High School. They were hard workers, very classy, and respectful of other teams, congratulated other teams, and that's not something that you see the whole time down there. There's a lot of mean-spirited girls, and that was not our girls. I'm really, really proud of them and who they are. They represented the school well. Super proud. Good job, girls.
I'd like to pass on a compliment from one of the parents that accompanied you down to Florida, and that parent wanted to make sure that I knew, and I want to make sure that you know, that he and his wife were more impressed, I think, with the comments that they heard from other kids and other teams about how you guys represented yourselves and your school down there and who you are as people while you're down there than they were of the fact that it's a repeat. So, I mean, it's all good, and congratulations.
Thank you.
On behalf of the whole board, I just can't tell you how proud we are in moments like this. It's why we serve, and we appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation from student Brady Afrik. And Brady is one of the students that kind of shows you what's possible. And so Brady saw, Brady was looking at ways that we could make that digital life experience, the Scout experience, that much better. So, I think what Brady has to offer us today is a real gift to our community. So, Brady?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I'd like to do three things in the next few minutes. First, I'd like to give you background about the app I've created. Second, I'll give you a demo and walk you through the app. And third, I'll tell you about the progress I've made while rolling out this app. So, what is the MyScout iPhone app? MyScout centralizes and organizes access to dozens of school resources that are used daily by students and parents. These include student links like Power School, school email, and parent links like the staff directory and MySchoolBox. Now, MyScout is, as you'll see in a moment, customizable and flexible. So, for example, I have my biology teacher's custom website already hooked up to the app. And so now, what was the development process like? And this is what I'm most proud of. Initial beta testing was done with my friends. I just created the app, and then I sent it to some of my soccer teammates, as well as teachers throughout the school. And then they gave me feedback, which was really, really critical to building the app and developing along the way. I was really grateful to have critical input from the district technology and communications professionals, like Mr. Dubose and Ms. Whipple. And I had just excellent feedback from Mr. Rogers and Superintendent Simic. And I had so much, you know, excellent feedback from all these people that I had six updates prior to the launch. So, with that, I'll give the demonstration of the app. So, this is mirroring to my iPhone right now, so I'm just going to walk you guys through it. So, this is the main screen of the app. It's the directory page, and it has six groups of buttons. There's Student, Parent, Lake Forest High School Activities, Lake Forest High School, and Create Custom Bookmarks. So, if you tap Student, you're greeted with the email, and then at the bottom, you can see the tab bar. And so you have Student Email, you have the schedule, so you know what time your class period ends, and you have the new student portal for homework, you have Power School, and you have Naviance as well. Then, just by hitting Home in the upper left, you can go back to the home screen, and you can go to Parent. Now, Parent has links that are separate from Student. Some of them share, like Power School, but they're links just for Parents. So, you have the Calendar, you have Power School, and then you have MySchoolBox, so parents could put money on their kid's lunch account straight from their phone. You have Naviance, and then you have the Staff Directory, so if you ever need to get into contact with a staff member, you can easily just send them an email. So, the next group of links is Lake Forest High School Activities. And you have Athletics, which is used by a lot of students to check team schedules, as well as check up on games. You have Theater, and you have Clubs. And then you also have Community Service and Handbook, which are two other useful links. So, the next group of buttons is Lake Forest High School. So, these are links just related to Lake Forest High School, as well as the community. So, the first one is News and Events, so you can always stay up to date on the school. And then the next ones across the bottom are the City of Lake Forest, the City of Lake Bluff, Croya, as well as Lead. And then this last group of buttons is Custom Bookmarks. So, this is because a lot of students, like myself, have teachers who have their own websites, which are very useful. So, here, you can easily add bookmarks, and you could add them using your Google account. So, that way, if you encounter one on your computer, you simply add it, and then it shows up on your phone. So, this is my biology teacher's website, so I can easily see, you know, the syllabus and class updates. And then it's easy to add a bookmark and even go to the Google apps that our school So, that's the app in a nutshell. While I was certainly excited about creating this app, I was equally excited to have the app be part of a fundraising effort for the foundation. So, my idea was that kids pursuing their passions should remember the school. But I still wanted the app to be free to encourage downloads. So, my approach was to reach out to those who had demonstrated interest in supporting education and technology to sponsor each download. Now, my objective was $1,750 for the foundation, which is about a dollar for every student. And I'm proud to say we've had 500 downloads in two weeks after a launch on the website, newspaper coverage, and email distribution by the foundation. We've had excellent reviews in the App Store. And in fact, just yesterday, I got some new feedback on the app. A staff member recommended including a staff section in the app, so that way, the staff could take part in the app, too. So, that is MyScout. Are there any questions about the app I can answer?
When is the Android version coming out?
I'm not sure.
You don't have to. Couldn't resist.
So, these-
Incredible, just incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're pulling from, so you're pulling from specific pages on the website. It looked like it was the website's mobile view that-
Exactly.
-is coming up, and those buttons link directly to that. It looks outstanding. Couple of questions for you. Are you taking classes at the high school that contributed to your ability to do this? And I'll ask you the second one at the same time. What are, what are your thoughts at this? What year are you?
I'm a freshman.
Freshman. Wow. What are your thoughts at this point, if you have had time to formulate any, as to your prospective college major and ultimately, your career?
If you were to ask me right now, I'd definitely say I have a future in coding or programming, and definitely developing software. And to answer your first question, I did not take a class on this at the high school because the language that Iowa Saps are coded in is a very kind of obscure language that's not really taught in the mainstream.
Just a follow-up question to that.
Of course.
So, I presume there wasn't a curriculum at 67 or wherever you were. So, as you look into your high school years, have you identified curriculum that you do think will lend to your career as a technologist, as a coder?
Yes, I'm definitely more drawn to classes like computer science. So, that definitely has a large appeal to me. But just anything that caters to technology really holds my interest.
It's good to know we're not completely irrelevant.
Brady, I just want to say, I've seen a lot of student presentations, and particularly coming from a freshman, I can't remember any of them that were more interesting or more compelling than yours. So, great job, and thanks for doing that for our school, and thanks for coming tonight to present to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, I think we would all agree that it's very exciting listening to Brady. I think what's also exciting is what Brady represents, and he represents what's best in the 21st century learner. So, as we embark on a number of different positive change initiatives, we're thinking of our students like Brady. And believe me, he's not the only one. There are hundreds and thousands behind him. He certainly is a leader, and I think we're proud of him, not just only because of the technical wizardry, but the fact that he wanted to give back to this community. So, thank you, Brady, very much. Moving forward, I want to give an update into one of our change initiatives, which is our New School Day initiative. And I've been briefing the board over the past few months about progress. And so, as of today, I just want to kind of just do a quick review for everybody, some people who are also in the audience. This past August, our leadership team, after reviewing quote-unquote "primary documents" that our teachers had created, our students had created, in terms of things that they would help create the ideal school, they looked at creating schedules that were more flexible, created time for students to follow their passions, like you'd see here in Brady. And other things importantly, how do we create the balance and wellness in our students' lives as they're faced with so many challenges moving forward? Moving into September and August, we had outstanding meetings with our faculty. We tapped into their creativity, we tapped into their resources, their knowledge. We worked with our leadership team. We even created an additional faculty team to develop this, called our LFEA Schedule Team. And we came up with at one time as many as 15 different schedules, and if you actually figured in some of the other variables, over 20 different schedules that we were looking at. And what was really exciting is in the building, we were driving great conversations around practice and teaching and learning. As the initiative moved forward, it was always our goal to go from divergent thinking and all these possibilities into converging and focusing some of these ideas. Over the past couple of months, those ideas have crystallized. We've had an opportunity to share those ideas with our parent community, get great insights and feedback from our parent community. As we get to this point, it was always our intention at this time to be able to present one schedule to the LFEA, and at that point, that schedule would hopefully be ratified, and then our Board of Education would have an opportunity to also approve it. So, as of last week, we met with the LFEA negotiating team. So, that's a team that negotiates, my understanding, that's a team that negotiates contracts, and this does require their involvement because this is a change in their workday. So, being completely respectful of the processes of the LFEA and their board, we met with them with the intention of being able to recommend our choice. After careful consideration, lots of thought, input from all of our stakeholders, that includes our parents, our students, our teachers, and our leadership team, we recommend Schedule Number Four. And Schedule Number Four was a hybrid block schedule, which included block days, some single classes, extended learning, a late start. We believe they had a lot to offer. In particular, if you've been following along with the initiative, there were a number of attributes in the schedule initiative that we thought were really important, including balance and wellness in kids' lives, in terms of being able to promote the best practices in education, opportunities for students to follow their passion, parts for inquiry, relevance, so on and so forth. When we presented that schedule with the LFEA Schedule Team, we were told that they would not put that schedule forth to the membership. This is something that they are entitled to do as part of the union process. And so unfortunately, it appears that we're not going to have a vote on Schedule Four. It was offered up that we present another schedule, Schedule One. We did not feel comfortable with presenting Schedule One because we did not believe that it met the attributes to nearly the same degree. Secondly, we found that it was problematic in terms of implementation of that schedule. And so, at this particular point, we are going to move forward. There is lots of exciting things in the school. Unfortunately, we will not be moving forward with our schedule initiative at this time. We have a lot of other exciting work to do in terms of our 21st Century Classroom Initiative, making sure that our students are prepared for a whole new generation of standards, and making sure that we continue to create dynamic, engaging, and exciting experiences for all students.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, and I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done. I also wanted to clarify a couple of things from where I sit related to this. The Board and LFEA contract is explicit about the structure of the workday. That language was reaffirmed in our last negotiation session a couple of years ago and continues for the next two years unless changes can be agreed upon. Any change, I repeat, any change to that workday language is known as a mandatory subject of bargaining. It also means that the LFEA did not need to discuss any changes with the administration and/or the Board. They were under no obligation to enter conversations, yet did so freely. We'd like to thank them for that. To say we are disappointed about the result of not being able to agree upon a schedule to present to the staff is certainly an understatement. Mr. Rogers, his administrative team, teacher committee volunteers, LFEA representatives, and students spent the past six months working very, very hard. At the center of those discussions were questions about what is best for kids, how best to utilize the time and talents of our teachers, how to provide meaningful collaborative time for our staff, and how to avoid unfortunate elective losses to our students because of the elimination of the PE waiver. We applaud the efforts of those who devoted so much time to this undertaking and believe that while a change to the schedule for the 14-15 school year no longer appears to be in the cards, that the discussions of what is best for kids, what is promising practice, and the need for continuous improvement will bear fruit in the coming months and years as we press forward to go from very, very good to great. And with that, I'd like to shift gears into something that will help us look forward into what is next for us. We will be having book talks about a book from Amanda Ripley called The Smartest Kids in the World. It's a book I encourage all of you to read. You can get a 10% discount at the Lake Forest Bookstore if you go there. One of the things that is most appealing about the book is the fact that it does not present any silver bullets. There isn't one solution that fits all or anything that is, the silver bullets are very, very common in education. If we just did this, we could fix all the ills, real or perceived, of public education. What it does do is it challenges all of us to think about what success looks like, how to measure that, and why that measurement is important, and also to challenge us to see if we can measure the things that we care the most about. And from our recent surveys from parents, the things that they want more than anything else is to have happy and healthy kids exit our school system. They also want them to be productive. And defining how we structure our work with our kids is something that we're hard at work on right now as far as the mission, vision, and goals. I'd like to encourage all of you to buy the book and then come to the book talks, which are featured on the website. If you have any questions about the time or the place of those, you can contact, you can look on the website, or contact Mrs. Whipple. And that ends the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Block.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. And I just want to reiterate some of what Mike had to say. I've read the book. It's an excellent book. I would highly recommend it for anyone out there in the public who has an interest in education. It's really informative, as Mike pointed out, without the silver bullet, without the agenda kind of issues that many of these types of things are tainted with. As I mentioned in the president's report, we covered a lot of the same kind of conceptual ground at our meeting last Sunday, our visioning meeting, and we had some teacher representatives there. I happen to see one of them in the audience. Megan, thank you for coming. I think it provided an opportunity for dialogue, which, as we discussed at the time on Sunday, is unfortunately too rare between many of us. And just speaking from the board's perspective regarding the comments on the block schedule change, I know it has nothing to do with me. I can't tell you how many people come up to me and say, isn't it nice if you came up with a schedule that's going to bear your name? Some people just don't seem to get it. But anyhow-
We can blame all this on you, then?
Yeah, go right ahead. Take a shot. But as you could tell from the last meeting, the board has quite a bit of enthusiasm for doing what it believes are in the best interest of kids and supporting the administration in that regard, and I know our teaching staff does it well. And I just have to believe that, you know, with further cooperation and communication, that we're going to come up with something that continues to improve Lake Forest High School. So, with that, it's time for public participation. If any members of the public would like to address the board, you're certainly welcome to do so. I just ask that you come to the podium, introduce yourselves, give your address, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes or thereabouts, we'd appreciate it. So, anybody from the public like to address the board? Oh my goodness, I saw these people out there. I assumed we might be here a while. Okay, well, seeing none, we'll move into reports and discussion. Mr. Simic, I think you have a couple of reports for us tonight.
Yes, Mr. Black, and this is one of the reports that we look forward to most. It's always very interesting, and there are always some interesting observations that Mr. Theo will provide. I'm very happy to see Brad joining tonight, Mr. Brad Naughton. And I am continually impressed in my conversations with our counselors at their knowledge and their passion and their tailoring of student interests to places that- their passion, and their tailoring of student interests to places that parents may or may not have ever heard of. I could pass on one to Mr. Naughton in appreciation for him being here. Parent communicated how impressed he was that Mr. Naughton knew his child so well, found a place that mom and dad were not familiar with, the student wound up with a number of choices, which was something that did not look like it would be a possibility at first for that particular student. And his student was able to go to her first pick, and that pick looks like an ideally, an ideal place, very much suited to her. And that's one of the things that in terms of looking at balance for our kids, and what is the right school for a given child might look very, very different even from one year to the next, but I think you guys really do a terrific job of trying to find out what motivates students and then tailoring their applications to those individual places. So, with that, I'd like to hand over to Mr. Theo and Mr. Naughton, thank you.
I'd also like to recognize, I see Ms. Berkshire out there in the gallery, another one of our counselors who has provided many, many years of service. Mr. Naughton and Ms. Berkshire got to know myself and my wife and my children very well, Brad had the unfortunate luck of being stuck with the B section of the alphabet for about ten years while all four of my kids were there. He got to deal with all of them. Okay, Jim?
All right, well, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to not only talk about our students, but also the Counseling Department and all the efforts of both individual students as well as our counselors to help students and parents through the college process. So, I'm going to start out, you know, every August, our students all return to Lake Forest High School to start a new school year, but our juniors and seniors are not only coming back to start a new school year, they're starting the college process. So with that, the juniors dive into Naviance, and they start their college searches, preparing college visits, and one of the things that we're really proud of is we're able to invite over two-hundred-and-thirty colleges to come in and universities to talk with our students and counselors, to ask questions and discuss their schools. So it's a great situation for the students to get college visits right there in Lake Forest High School. Then the seniors, it's pretty much go time to start of the school year, it's time to get the applications, the recommendations together and complete them, and then start to finalize that process. And that first semester is quite a process, and the counselors meet a lot of individual meetings with students as well as group seminars. And tonight, what we're going to do is start out by just talking about some of those opportunities that the counselors provide to the students and parents in the individual seminars, as well as the evening seminars with parents. And Brad, who has been a counselor at Lake Forest High School for over twenty years, has a lot of experience, and he is going to just give some insight to some of those seminars, and Brad Naughton.
Thank you for having me. Jim asked me to speak today about really kind of our delivery of services to students, and I want to take a step back, I guess, and explain the formation of our department, and it's important to that delivery of services. What we have is we take the alphabet, we divide it equally into seven parts, so for each of us counselors, that gives us a number of somewhere between two-fifty to two-seventy-five as far as one counselor to students. And we keep that slice of the alphabet, so I've been the very beginning of the alphabet for my entire time at the high school, so yes, I had Mr. Block's kids, but I also have Brady who gave the awesome presentation, and Brady has an equally awesome brother who's currently a senior, and his dad's sitting in the audience right now. And what I could tell you is that for us to deliver services to our kids, that also includes us delivering services to their parents. And having that relationship, that ease to be able to receive a phone call, give a phone call, and sometimes those phone calls in difficult situations where you need to be kind of director blonde, or part of the strength of our system is really our system itself, and the fact that we actually do really get to know our kids, and that I know that Jackie and I and all seven of us do a lot of business frankly by a knock on the door, and questions get answered, advice gets given, and so when you do feel like you actually really know the student that you're counseling, you can make sometimes those individual little kind of nuggets of information that do seem to make a difference in a kid's education and their lives. So, outside of that individual counseling approach, we also have a systematic kind of developmental curriculum that we provide through seminars. To all four classes, we meet in small groups with those classes once every quarter, so systematically each one of our nine-week, or eighteen-week grading periods. For example, currently, what we are doing right now is we're in the midst of registration, we have face-to-face individually registered all of our incoming ninth graders, so we made visits to all the eighth grades, and now we are, we just finished, I believe, yesterday all of our juniors, and we will start tomorrow with all of our sophomores to be juniors, selecting their classes for next year. In the fall, we did meet with all of our, all four classes again in our seminar setting. The first group that we met with right off the bat was, as Jim stated, were the seniors. And the system that we currently have in place is, the information that we provide to the classes, to the students, the situation of seniors, we follow up with it with an evening presentation to the parents, so that the information not only goes to the student, but then that information is reinforced at home with the parents. So for the seniors' example in the fall, the discussion really centers around the application process itself, for lack of a better term than nuts and bolts of actually processing applications, getting transcripts out, making contact with teachers, with teacher recs, how to send their test scores, a lot of the things that can provide quite a bit of stress frankly for the kids. And then later, this year was a Thursday evening, we also invited the parents to come in to go through the same format. For the freshmen, we had a really, a get-to-know-you, this is Lake Forest High School, I'm your counselor, who are you, where's my office, how much homework are you doing, are you still getting lost, questions like that, and then a get-to-know-you with the parents later that night. The juniors really, as Jim stated, the fall contact was really regarding Naviance and the college search process itself. How do I look, how do kids make decisions, what kind of criteria do they use in selecting school, size, location, specific programs, what are they looking for, kind of et cetera, et cetera. And then the sophomores, we really kind of kicked off sophomore years really geared towards career exploration, job shadowing, potential college majors, et cetera. So, we will continue this process throughout the year, the middle portion of the year again is registration, and at the end of the year, again, for many of our seniors, it's the process of leaving high school and getting started on a new path of their life. The other little portion that Jim really asked me to speak about is that there has been a movement in our department to really get outside of our department, get out and professionally develop and travel, see schools. In particular, I know Jackie and Denise Brown this past year went to NACAC, National Organization on College Admissions. Myself, I, late winter, in between Thanksgiving and Christmas, I was able to get out and I saw seven schools in a four-day period of time, and really got to meet with the admissions offices and got to get out firsthand, walk campuses, see kids, ask questions. It will occasionally throw off a college student when an adult stops them, ask them what they think of the food and things like that, but you want to be able to sit down with the student later on and say, look, I've been on campus and I did ask students, I've experienced it, I've seen it, even simple questions like how easy or hard it is to get to from the airport, real-life, real-life options. So, questions?
Brad, how good are we, in your opinion, in terms of the, you know, college preparation is one part of it, right, and the curriculum and what our kids go through, but truly from a college search and placement? I know we've made some changes over the years in terms of how we've approached that, now it's much more kind of team-concentrated. What's your opinion in how that transition has taken place, and then your kind of professional assessment in how good we perform in that area?
And we asked the kids that actually in a survey at the end of the year, and we actually charted the number of schools, the number of kids who get into what they perceive as being their first choice, and I would tell you that nationally, those numbers are very high. For me, the biggest concern, more of a concern for me, and what I would tell you that we're strongest at, goes back to again, actually knowing the student and having that student for four years, and then having what would be an appropriate fit to what the student tells us that they're looking for in a school. And what I mean by that is we can find differing admissibility levels in every shape and size and location in the country, big school, small school, warm climate, cold climate, near home, away from home. For me, what makes me feel good is, and where I think we're strongest at, is that I feel like I can look at a student in my course load, a senior, and see the place that they're going to leave after they're with us, and can understand why they chose that school. And to me, that, I would tell you, I think we're exceptional at. And again, I think it really comes back from the product of having a counselor number ratio that we can manage and truly get to know a student.
Just a quick follow-up, so I have a soon-to-be freshman, and, you know, to steal a line from my friend Keith Martino, incoming freshmen have six shots on goal, right, when you think about preparing and educating yourself. How, do you find yourself with your freshmen having those conversations? Because I know as a father, they're not listening to me, you know, in terms of, hey, here's what you should be thinking about, and sometimes reinforcing that from a school level, I think is valuable. Do you, you know, what kind of dialogue do you end up having with the freshmen that come in about how important it is to be thinking about three years down the road? Because most of us, myself included, can't really think three hours down the road sometimes?
Sure. I have an incoming freshman next year, I live in Lake Bluff, he'll be a freshman to high school, and for me, it's convincing him that freshman year matters is the first step. And so we do talk about that timetable, and it's interesting is that we're, like I said, we just registered our juniors, and I, for all of them, I said, can you believe how fast it went? And they all say, you told me it was going to go really fast, and I go, wait, next year's going to go faster. And you're right, six semesters is commonly with the first transcript that we send out. And so we do be, right off, literally the first full week of school is with our freshmen, and we do tell them things like misperceptions, that, look, freshman year does matter, and we are, these grades are going on a permanent record. Yet, trying to strike that balance between rigor and challenge and earning good grades, and in all honesty, that's not a perfect science. And I know I keep going back to, but that goes back to again, establishing, you know, relationships between the counselor and the student, and being able to have that talk as to where's that line between you really challenging yourself in learning and earning the kind of grades that would make you marketable in a competitive college environment.
Any sort of information, it's great getting the kids into the college of their choice, but what about following them? Any sort of insights getting all the way through that school, or finding out that maybe they weren't quite as prepared as they thought for that school? Any sort of data that we're tracking, I guess is what I'm looking for?
We did at one point run a five-year study of post grads at graduation rates. I can tell you anecdotally, kids come back commonly for breaks, Thanksgiving and winter in particular. And even at the most competitive schools, our students are coming back telling us that they feel like they're more prepared for that adventure than many of the students that they're attending with. And just like, off the top of my head, a class that sticks out to me right now is we're offering an accounting honors class taught by Joe Pulio, and many students coming back saying, I think I could teach the class if I had to, and that there's, they feel so much more prepared than the students that they're sitting next to.
Occasionally, a student or a parent feels like they're falling through the cracks here, what advice would you give to someone who's got a freshman or sophomore in the school about how better to access your service and take full advantage of it so that that doesn't happen to them?
We, honestly, we encourage all of them to literally come down and just make an appointment at our front desk and come down and sit with us. A lot of it, particularly the freshman, particularly the freshman first seminar is truly a get-to-know-you, and many of us end that seminar literally by walking with them from the room that we have the seminar to literally our desks, to show them where our office is and where, and how to make an appointment with us. And that doesn't, that seems like a simple thing, but for some freshmen, that could be a pretty overwhelming issue, and I know a lot of us get emails from students asking questions, and many times our response is, please stop in and make an appointment to see us. I think a lot of that comes down to ease frankly, and being able to find us how accessible we are and getting in to see us. That's, the registration process that we're going through currently right now, it used to be done by paper with no interaction, I mean, face-to-face interaction with the counselor at all. So I think now having that as a set time virtually required for the student to sit in front of us, we're trying to kind of break down those gates, get them in with us, get them comfortable with us, so we can later on have those comfortable meetings with them sitting in our office.
I'd like you and John, I have an incoming freshman in the fall.
Good luck.
Thanks. But I really, kudos to the Counseling Department, the ease of registration, it was very painless.
Good.
I was impressed, and I think she got everything she wanted, and it was really a good interface, you know.
I think overwhelmingly, the counselors would tell you, I know David Brandis, one of the other counselors, said it to me for sure, is, we find it fun. It really is, it is really fun to sit down and talk to them and ask them the things that they're excited about, and I always started off with, you know, most of my ask when they came to curriculum nights, we have a Wednesday curriculum night where all the students can come, and said, you know, did you see a class that you absolutely need to take when you come to the high school? That's usually how I started the conversation. And that answer varies greatly from math to lunch, and, you know, that's just kind of the fun part.
I had two questions for you, I'll hit you with them one at a time. The first one is related to, they're both related to trends, but the first trend is whether or not you're following or tracking in any way the application patterns of kids. I mean, we had thirty students apply at Clemson, we had twenty-two at Auburn, Southern Miss, also a large amount, so Southern Methodist had eighteen and so on. Some of the, some of those things are things I know that are on your radar, so could you talk to us about that a little bit?
Well, Naviance allows us to check, or to track past applications for six years. And so, we are able to keep on, year to year, the number of applicants, number of admits and denies, and then ultimately, the number that enroll. So yeah, we are able to track trends, and, you know, what you're learning to is one of the biggest ones right now is happens to be southern schools. They are growing in popularity, I think. Many times, these trends actually, like a lot of businesses have done, sometimes it's mouth-to-mouth. A student goes, has a good experience at a school, tells another student to come visit, and then that spreads to another student, that spreads to another student. So, southern schools are certainly one of the fastest-growing trends that you see, you know, it's two degrees outside, so it's hard to not see how that could be attractive to a student. And then, I think tied into that, there's also a trend, growing trend of kids maybe being savvier consumers and weighing, really weighing scholarship money, and what their, ultimately, their four-year experience could cost them, and how much potential debt that they could be occurring, and especially there's life decisions, like would I be looking at graduate school, how much undergraduate debt am I going to build up if I'm not done at the end of four years? So those are probably the two trends I think we'd see, at least with our kids, growing fastest. I think there's a larger volume of applications that we, maybe we had ten years ago, and I would say some of that's just the product of the common application, which is an application you could use for four-hundred schools in place of their own, and some of the ease of just being able to apply online, that just wasn't in place twenty years ago.
And the other one is, in our earlier conversations, you'd mentioned that ten or fifteen years ago, money very rarely came into the conversation with parents, and now it is literally every single parent that our counselors talk to, that that is a consideration. My question for you is, watching that trend out, the question of whether or not you believe there's a bubble in the higher ed, and where you see that potentially stopping, because the value proposition of a half a million dollar undergraduate- Because the value proposition of a half a million-dollar undergraduate educational experience will come into question at some point.
Yeah. But yet, there was an article today in the New York Times about they feel like the disparage between a high school diploma and a college diploma is actually growing, not shrinking. So, yes, it becomes, again, being a smart consumer. What, at what cost am I ultimately paying out of pocket and potentially the debt? And what could that, what real number would that be to me, that debt? Versus what my diploma is going to bring me, what potential actual real-life income is that going to bring? And what that impact is? And those are conversations that are occurring now in our offices with, I think it started off frankly with parents and us. And now, it's moved to parents and students and us. And but then, there's the whole value of just frankly bettering yourself as a human, too. You know, I would tell you that I think, this is very personal, but the degree I have in counseling, I think ultimately, not only did it provide for me an occupation, which I love and I have a great job, but I hope my wife would say it made me a better husband, ultimately a better father, I would hope, and, you know, enhance my life. And there's that value, too, that we can't put a price tag on.
Well, I started off by saying that Brad wound up working with my wife and I for four different children. Mrs. Burcher was a huge help as well. And first off, I want to thank you both for that. And just a little free advice out there. I can't recommend strongly enough that parents engage with their student's counselor. It's a process. It's a four-year journey. I'd like to say, in my case, that, you know, I get four years' worth of, four children worth of education in the college prep process. If anything, what I learned was, that's not possible. What you get is four, one year. Or one student kinds of experiences. Everybody's different. And because of that and many, many other reasons, it is really valuable to have a good relationship with your student's counselor. And if you want to find out what your child is thinking about college, I can't think of a better place to find it because you're not likely to have as good of information as your child's counselor will have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I brought him. I just wanted to also speak about some of the questions that were asked earlier. I've worn a few hats in the high school over the years. And three years ago, I came into the counseling department as Director of Student Services. And I was immediately impressed with the programs that they had in place, working with students to see that firsthand. And there's several things that they value a lot, and Brad touched on them. Certainly, the student contact. And talking to colleagues at other schools, Director of Student Services, we have as much or more FaceTime with our students than many schools. And that also is the individual FaceTime that they get. And that being that our caseload, student-to-counselor caseload ratio is excellent. And we value that. And I know not only the counselors, but we as a school, over the years, that's been discussed. And that's about how we do business with our students, not only just for the college process, but from day one, when they come in the school as freshmen. So, we can get that individual time as well as seminar time and meet with these students on a regular basis. And our counselors had this developed long before I came on the scene. And they always, in our department meetings, individually, collectively, continue to try to improve those seminars and that FaceTime with students. So, just wanted to point that out before we get started in the report. Okay. This is consistent pretty much with the last few years. Basically, our students attend about 58 to 60% last year in the Midwest. The Northeast and the West and Southwest pretty much make up the difference with about equally 12, 13, 17%. Last year, it was a little bit reversed. It was about 14% out East, Northeast, and it was about 14%, 15% out West. As Brad said, there's trends that happen. And you'll see as we go on with the different slides that students talk. There's different reasons for the trends. And I'll kind of get into a little bit of that as we go. Obviously, a trend right now, if you want to use that word trend, there's lots of reasons. But Indiana being the top, not only applied, but accepted and attended school last year, 2013 class. That's a change that we've all been seeing and hearing and reading in the papers. Fewer students are applying, not applying, yeah, applying and, but definitely being accepted to U of I. And the Big Ten schools are popular with all the Midwest schools. So, a lot of our students are applying to the Indiana's, Wisconsin, the other Big Ten schools. And Indiana is obviously the most applied school. And you'll see in the next slide how many students are attending that from the class of 2013. Miami of Ohio, these actually are all the same five top schools for highest-accepted and applied from last year. So, these are kind of staples. Miami of Ohio, very popular school with students from Lake Forest, has been for a long time. Missouri and University of Iowa. Private schools, again, four of the five are this, again, the top five, being University of Denver, last year, having my notes here, was TCU was the other private school that was the top five. Marquette, Dayton, DePaul, and Indiana. Last year, we sent 10 students there. This year, it was about four. When I say last year, 2012. And again, a lot of students, I think, were drawn to that word-of-mouth. A lot of good things going on there. And again, DePaul here in Chicago. But what I want to say about the private schools is there's a lot of, we've always had more private school applications. Looked, we had 1,300 students apply to the private and around 1,100 for the public. And that's been pretty consistent. It's not just recent because of the cost and the merit-based scholarships that the privates offer. We've all know and heard about the money that they offer. There's lots of other factors that come into play with the private schools. And Brad touched on one location. You know, students want to go to certain schools based on the location. They also want to go to schools to have maybe a smaller feel. And a lot of these are small schools or what we call mid-majors. And they can still get the big college feel. You take a school like Marquette, they have a top basketball team. So, the kids get that college atmosphere and a sports feeling because a lot of students, believe it or not, want to have that Big Ten feel. They want to be at those football and basketball games and be, experience that. So, some of the smaller and mid-majors can still offer that, University of Dayton. The other thing is, as you just saw with our Palm Squad, our dance team, we have a lot of student athletes that want to keep playing. And whether it be Division One, Two, or Division Three, they can do that at these schools. They can also, at some of the bigger Big Ten schools, we've had students that have obviously been able to play at those schools as well. But a lot of these private schools, students can continue a lot of the same successes that they're experiencing here at Lake Forest High School. So, they choose a private school to do that. Okay, here we're back to the public schools and top-attended. Indiana, 26, U of I, 17. That was reversed last year. You know, Illinois was our top enrollment, students going to Illinois. And then, Indiana was second. And Indiana is definitely what call a hot school right now. The campus is very nice campus. Students like it. They can go there. And they can also probably equal the cost or maybe even make it less than U of I. Because again, merit-based scholarships as well as need scholarship money and need-based money. And so, they can come out ahead of the game than go into U of I. And again, it's a Big Ten school, has everything that U of I has to offer. Miami of Ohio, 15 students. And then Madison, which is kind of back on the scene. We, I looked at the last 10 years, actually. 10 years ago, the five-year span, we were, we had a lot of students applying, anywhere from 50 to 75 students, with more than half or around half getting into the school, being accepted. And then, the last five years, we've had a little bit down in applying, but the acceptance rate has been way down, as you'll see in the next slide. That being to the reciprocity of, with Minnesota and in-state acceptance and out-of-state not being accepted as high as it was in years past. And then Missouri, again, these have been steadily the top-five schools, public schools, for students from Lake Forest High School to attend. College of Lake County, 21. That's a little higher than the last few years. That's a trend of probably students that want to start there. Excellent place to start for two years. But also, we have 14 students that attend our Lake County Vocational Center. And many of the students are continuing on to Lake County, College of Lake County, which is an excellent place for them to continue on the vocation and some of the trade and skills that they are taking up at the tech campus center. And we're a little more diverse than we've been in years past. And again, 21 is one of the higher numbers we've had in recent years for students to attend. But it's an excellent place for the right student to start. Marquette had nine students last year. Vanderbilt, as we talked about, southern school, medical research. I think that's a very good number. I haven't seen seven students in the last few years with Vanderbilt, getting into Vanderbilt. And you'll see the acceptance percentages in the next slide. It's a very tough school to get into. So, Dayton has been consistent. That number is a little down a couple. But again, that's a school where not only students go there because it's a great school, but also they can continue some of the great things like play sports or be, it's a, they are very big on their service, Dayton. So, a lot of students, and we all know how much our students are involved in the community and service work in Lake Forest. Well, Dayton is known for that. Boston College, Illinois Wesleyan, both of those are up. Northwestern, the same number, five, six students. You'll see the acceptance rates are very good in Denver, Notre Dame, and Valparaiso. When you see the next slide, the four, well, first we'll do the public. These are the average acceptance rates. And again, these are self-reporting on Naviance. So, they're not 100% probably accurate, but they are as far as the recent numbers in the five-year study and the school's average. You can look on Naviance and they may change or fluctuate. Indiana University, obviously, as I said, it's been a very popular school. So, we have a lot of students applying, but a lot of students getting accepted. And our five-year average is good compared to the school's average. So, it'll probably continue to be a very popular school. And we'll see a lot of our students continue to apply there. U of I, every school, all the high schools in the area, I think, are probably seeing that number dip for them as far as acceptance. We also still have a lot of students applying there, and it's just getting tougher to get into. Miami of Ohio, again, a popular school. Our five-year average is really good. This last year's class, again, it's a popular school, so a lot of students are applying. So, you have a 71%, but still, that's a lot of students getting in there. And it's a great place to be. Madison, now that number for the school's average is really more around 50% because I did some checking on that. As I said, the five-year average at 40% is a little bit lower because of the changes that they've had. And last year's class, class of 2013, a lot of students applied. And 12 decided to go there. And I don't have the exact number but of how many were accepted, but it was 28%. So, it's a much tougher school. Brad and I were talking about that earlier. It's probably the biggest change of acceptance for out-of-state especially that we've seen with some of the local schools in the Midwest. And Missouri is, you know, a school that, a lot of, safety school for a lot of students, but also a school first choice for a lot of students. So, consistently, a good school, a good choice for a lot of our students. Most attended, again, for private. And when you look at Vanderbilt, Boston College, Northwestern, and Notre Dame, looking at the five-year average compared to the schools, we're doing very well. Those are obviously four top, very competitive schools. And look at all those schools, we're doing really well as far as our acceptance rates. And again, the numbers, you have to look at the five-year. You can't just look at one year because there are trends. And a lot of students will hear about a school and they'll apply to. We know as the counselors and I think the parents and students, but, you know, they want to apply because that can be their stretch school and they really hope, maybe I can get in there. And just some updates on what we've been doing over the years. This is our fourth year with electronic transcripts. We continue to help train the teachers and give them support. And we have 121 teachers that are currently using Naviance to upload their recommendations. That's an increase of 14 teachers. So, we've pretty much got them all, almost. And we continue, we've just implemented using Naviance to do our recommendations for classes. So, any questions? I know it's been a long presentation.
Questions, board member? Thank you very much, Jim. I know it's way too early for a drum roll, but I would point out that Mr. Thiel will be retiring at the end of the school year. And I hope we get to see you before then. I'll just put it to you that way.
I'm sure you will.
Good. In past years, we have posted this information on the website. Ms. Whipple, I presume we will, or maybe you've even already done that already this year. I would again encourage all parents to look at this. As Jim tried to stress, I think it's the five-year data that is the most applicable. And, you know, I would personally caution when looking at school-wide acceptance rates for public institutions, realize that many schools only publish their overall acceptance rate, including their in-state rate. And most particularly popular public schools have become quite restrictive on out-of-state acceptances, as Jim pointed out in his presentation. So, it can be a little bit misleading. But I think if you look through this data and see what the acceptance rate for our students is compared to private schools' average acceptance rates in particular, you'll see we generally compare quite, quite favorably. And we have a first-rate counseling group to thank for that. So, thank you.
And we always welcome, you know, input from students and parents. As Brad said, we do a survey at the end of the year. And we try to do, we bring in Jerry Savinsky from Lake Forest College every year to help with a financial aid program that the parents really appreciate. We get a great turnout for that. And our counselors get out to luncheons and get invites all the time to different colleges to meet at certain locations to discuss recruiting of students. And our counselors want to try to make every connection they can. They attend all the college visits when we have the reps come in. As I said earlier, we had last year over 230 colleges and universities send representatives to Lake Forest High School, which is pretty impressive, I think. It's a great opportunity for the students to talk to representatives from the colleges, ask questions. And our counselors attend those as well. So, they're doing everything they can to help students, and we're always trying to improve the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, I think we have another administrative report from Mr. Kraniek. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'm pleased to introduce Scott Kraniek. And Mr. Rogers, I don't know if you'd like to provide a segue here or just go straight to Mr. Kraniek?
A quick segue, I think, would be in order. Mr. Kraniek's going to be talking about some of our security initiatives that we've been embarking on since the beginning of this year. I'm very happy to bring Scott as a full-on member and full-on leader of this initiative. Scott brings years of experience with the Lake Forest Police Department. I think he also is- I think he also is particularly, in terms of knowing what goes on at the school, he's been an employee at the school pretty much full-time since construction. And so he's been able to provide a lot of insights in terms of how to make the school better. And so part of this initiative certainly is how do we make the school a safer place? But at the same time, how do we keep up the spirit of Lake Forest being a welcoming place to all of our community members and students? So, Mr. Kraniek?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, Superintendent Simic and the board for the invite to talk about this. Obviously, it's always a topic of conversation around the country, almost on a daily basis, unfortunately. What I thought I would do is just start out by kind of giving you basically what the law states that is required by every building that houses schoolchildren on a daily basis. So this is the Illinois Complied Statute one oh five, one twenty-eight. And basically, it's the School Safety Drill Act. And you have to know that this is law, we have to do this. This is a breakdown of what, what drills we actually have to do. And we must do the following, we have to do three evacuation drills, one with the fire department on site. As you can see, we have completed this requirement already this year. And what's really remarkable, in the last two years that we've timed this drill, we are evacuating the entire building of almost two thousand people with under four minutes, which is really remarkable. And it's a true testament to our teachers who really step up in times of things like this as well. We have to do one bus evacuation drill every year. We will complete this in spring of two thousand and fourteen, if, if spring ever arrives. My recommendation to the Safety and Security Committee would be that we do this drill in the beginning of the year. Unfortunately, it slipped by us this year, you know, Mr. Rogers was new and he had a lot going on, and I don't think anybody really knew that we had not completed this. So we will do it, we'll do it in the spring, we will be compliant. We have to do one shelter and place drill, which is more commonly referred to as a tornado drill. We'll do that in the spring of two thousand and fourteen as well, usually in April, when they have the tornado awareness week. So we'll do that, and we've done that for the last couple of years. Now, and you know that the procedure for the tornado drills have changed. We no longer evacuate to the basement like we used to do. We go to an inner wall, because we found out that there's not enough time on some of these storms. And we've lost three schools in, in this country in the last two years from, from severe weather. So we do have to maintain that and stay up with that. The last one was just signed into law this year by Governor Quinn in June, it took effect immediately. Now, this is not a lockdown drill, lockdowns are not required by law, although we have already done one. This active shooter drill, i- it's kind of interesting, because the law states that you do not have to have students in the building when we complete the drill. Unfortunately, with this drill, and I've talked with the chief about it, it's, it's a, it's an undertaking for them. Because when you consider the, that they have nine buildings in this, in this community, when you consider Saint Mary's School, the two academies, Country Day School, this is not an, an easy drill. I've done many of these drills, it takes several officers, probably four or five with a supervisor. It's very disruptive to the academic environment if we were to do this, you know, during the week, during a, a school week. So we're, we haven't really figured out how we're going to do this drill. What, what the plan is right now is that they want to come in in June, right when school's out. We want to do the drill, film it, and then see what it looks like, and then kind of go on from there. But we will be compliant this year, it will be done before the end of this, this school year. So we're kind of stepping through this one a little bit, because we have never done this. We know, and this is, this isn't me, this is your top, you know, your safety, you know, experts around the country will tell you that the top three safety issues in schools today are lack of access control, lack of safety training, and lack of preparedness due to poor emergency operation plans. Three very simple issues that face all schools today. So currently, our Safety and Security Initiative is, is we're going to update our existing emergency operation plan. And what we're going to do is, I've been meeting with Lake Forest Police Department and the Fire Department almost on a weekly basis, is we're going to use the Federal Emergency Management Agency's template. Because they've designed this, they've put a lot of work into it. And the city of Lake Forest has also gone to this type of emergency plan. So it only makes sense that we would kind of piggyback with them and do theirs, because realistically, the first three minutes of our critical incident, we're going to have different, different things we're going to have to do. After that, they will take over. There, this, this FEMA plan actually subscribes to and includes the National Incident Management System. I, I know that sounds like a mouthful, it's called NIMS, but, but those people who are in these, this kind of occupation and settings understand what NIMS is. And it's basically, when you look at the definition, it's pretty simple. It's a set of principles that provides a systematic approach to prevent, protect against, respond to, recover from, and mitigate the effects of incidents, and that means all incidents. It's not, the size shouldn't matter, we would follow this template no matter what. It also includes the incident command structure, which basically tells what every person's role and responsibility is. You know, Superintendent Simic will probably, if he were over here and we had an active incident in the building, probably would not be able to get on campus. Because after the police and fire department get there, they're not going to let anybody on or off. So his role is going to be actually different than Principal Rogers would, who would probably be in, in the thick of things. And then, of course, once we do this plan, we will get it certified, the board will see it, and then we'll get it certified. And what's nice is that if we use the FEMA plan, any, any grants that come down from the federal government for safety and security, we can apply for those. If you do not have this in place, they will not allow you to apply for that. And, and I had shown Mr. Rogers a couple already that had come across my desk. Unfortunately, our plan does not include this certificate, certificate. So we need to do this, and, and we're on that now. My goal is to have it done by summer and, and present it to the board. And then we can do next fall training for the faculty and staff, because that's critical. The Security Committee, as you can see, this is who's on it. Now, it's not required by law, but the Regional Office of, of Education requires that every school has a Security Committee. These are the people that have, have actually offered to be on it, Mr. Thiel, who's, who, that's why we can't let Jimmy go. You know, he's on the Security Committee as well. And he's actually always been on it with me, from going back to when I was a School Resource Officer. So we will proceed with that. Where we're at now, okay. Remember what I said, access control or lack of is one of our issues facing schools? We lock our doors, we've been locking our doors for like the last year now. And the only door that we leave open after eight o'clock is the front door, where we have a greeter station. This has been a big cultural change for Lake Forest, I know it, but it's worked well. And the idea is that you have to control that part of this, of this building. Now, we want it to be comfortable, I, I want people to feel welcome when they walk in the building. And that's certainly, you know, you want to feel comfortable when you come into Lake Forest High School. It's, it's, it's our building, it's your building, and we want that. We don't want feel, people feel that they don't, they're not welcome. So it's, it's kind of a tough task when you think of security and that as well. We do have two quasi-security people out front of the building. If you've met Billy G. and, and JT are out there. Now, I don't, I don't like to call them security per se, but they have radios. And, and they take it very personal, they are very aware of who should or should not be on the grounds, and they, they always are, are very good about being proactive about that. When lunchtime comes, fourth, fifth, and sixth period, we also have two additional staff members in the back. So we have the outside somewhat covered. For the first time, probably since construction, starting next Tuesday, we will have a uniformed house security guard at the East Campus. And he will, his hours will be from five-thirty to nine-thirty, Monday through Friday. Now, I'm there till six every night, I, my hours are ten to six. And I certainly stay for all major events, you know, whether it's concerts, basketball games, banquets, dances, whatever. So I'm there too. Now, I will overlap with the security guard, give him an idea of what's going on in the building, and then he will, you know, walk the halls and, and stay more or less towards the greeters station. Some of the things that I think that we've added that may not, everybody may not be well aware of, but when construction took over, we, we made all our phones nine-one-one capable from every classroom. So any teacher can use that. We have an updated camera system, and I will get back to that in a second. We installed these emergency buttons in every classroom. The unique feature about these is that, as you can see the red button there, a teacher can, if, if a student, like, I'll give you an example of what happened last year. We had a student faint or pass out in class. The teacher can go and render aid to the student, press the red button, which then rings on one of four or five phones in the main office, dean's office, principal's office, assistant principal's office. There's always somebody around. It gives the indication on a, on a readout what room that's coming from. The person who picks up the receiving end of that can say, what's your emergency? And the teacher doesn't have to stop rendering aid, she can just talk through the intercom system. So there's, there's no, there's no break, and she can say what, what it is she needs. And last is the rescue assistance buttons. Those were installed in the stair, the new stair towers that we installed in construction on the south side of the building. Those have a, you know, like a burn rating and a fire of like several hours. So if we have students with special needs, maybe in a wheelchair, they can take those students to those areas, press that button. The fire department responds, they go to the enunciator panel, which is outside the library, and there's a buzzer. And the fire department can talk to those people in those stair towers and ask them, and they're obviously going to go right to them. So they're going to get, they're going to get assistance within a few minutes, okay? And if we can pull up the cameras, I'll just give you an idea about our camera system. Now, we, we've had cameras in, at Lake Forest High School since the late nineties, this is nothing new. When we did construction, we, we updated the system, obviously, put the infrastructure in. We went from forty-eight cameras, I think in oh-six, to we have about a hundred and five cameras now, with about a hundred and twenty-one different views at East Campus. We also have seven cameras here at West. What's neat about this is that I, I even have it on my phone. So if the security guard that will be there next week, or the cleaning crew, sometimes call me late at night and say, geez, there's somebody wandering around, we're not sure who, who they are. I can actually look on my phone and see if I can find out and if I can spot them. If it's a teacher, maybe it's working late or something like that. So it's a, it's a very unique system. The camera system is web-based, it stores information for about fourteen days. I don't like to use the word surveillance, because there's nobody sitting around all day watching cameras. I certainly don't. Now, I have this on my desktop that I can, I can look at while I'm sitting there. But I will not, you know, basically look at these all day long unless I, I'm working a major event, and then I could sit down there and watch, you know, a lot of things at one time. This, this system is unique in the sense that even the police department can go on this if they had to. If we had a critical incident in a building, the police and fire department could actually log into this, to this system and find out where that's at. So what I like about it is that it's, it's, it's really a good investigative tool. I gave this example last week that, you know, I had a student who thought he had his jacket stolen. His mom was pretty upset, it was a Christmas present, and he came to me about three days later. He said it was taken out of the commons after he had it put on the back of his chair. And he took his tray back, and he came back and the jacket was gone. So I brought him down to the office, and we looked, and I said, show me where you were sitting. And there he is, he's sitting there, but there's no jacket on the chair, okay? So he said, all right, well, where did you come in the building at? And he says, well, I came in the front door, I get off the bus, and I come in the front door. So I saw, I, we went back to the front door, and here he comes walking through the front door, he does not have his jacket on. So, that's one way to, you know, you fix that little problem. We call the bus company, like, we have his jacket all as well. So it's a very, very unique system. I was going to see if I could pull up the basketball game to find out what the score was, but, any questions on, on this? Yeah, see, this won't let me look, it won't let me scroll.
I had a question for you.
Oh, it did, okay, yes.
Um, A, this is great, what else could be done from your perspective? And I'm thinking about things like, I know we've got text-to-tip, and, which is a great thing. And we've got conceal and carry, which has got me nervous.
Sure.
Things evolve, right? So these are things that I think we've recognized could and should be done, but what, what, what are you thinking about sort of down the line?
Well, I think a lot of it is, I have to work within the policies that the school sets up. There, there's things that, it, it's a unique school in, in the sense that we have an open campus. Now, you look at other schools around the district, you know, Stevenson, Libertyville, Munnell Line, things like that. You don't have the amount of traffic flow of kids coming and going during the day. And, and, and so I think through some policy change, we could probably tighten up a little bit better. One of the, the hardware things that we're looking at is that vestibule, you know, we, we changed the, the parent pickup policy this year, where a parent doesn't go through the front doors and go to the dean's office anymore. They stay in the vestibule, and the greeter can call the student, have the student come down. Most schools are like that. Keep in mind that, that the hardware and, and security deterrence, okay, and all the technology we have will not trump that human element that creates the weakness, you know? Having eyes and ears out there is really the most important part. You know, we don't really have a, a lot of support staff that watches. So when we started locking doors, I mean, we still get kids that will open doors for their buddies. You know, we can't, it's hard to prevent that. But I think the committee has to look at some of the policy, maybe some policy changes. We have a lot of alumni that come in the building, as, as Mr. Norton attested to. You know, one of the things that concerns me is that during holiday breaks, and we can have fifteen, twenty alumni a day, you know, they're on break and they're, they don't have anything to do, so they want to come over to the high school. It's a great thing, because it's, it says a lot about a kid who's graduated or wants to come back. But in my world, you know, I don't particularly like that, I would like to restrict that to someone. You think, well, what can we do for that? Well, maybe we have two days that we post on a website. We invite alumni to the Wedge Cafe and provide, you know, coffee and, and bagels for four hours a day, and then tell the teachers, if you want to come down and see the alumni, here's where they're going to be for these two days. And maybe we can restrict things in that fashion. There's, there's also other hardware stuff out there, you know, the driver's license swipe, sex offender thing. I have some mixed emotions about that as well, but there's things we can do. We're going to add another, we have key fobs that, that we added to our doors during construction, which makes it easier that when employees leave the district, we can discontinue the key, key fob and, and remove their access. Now, I've been handing out, because I'm in charge of the keys for the building, hard copy keys for years, but people come and go and retire, I don't get the keys back, and I, we've had a breakdown there. So the key fob system will prevent that in the future as well, so.
It seems to me that the greeter is in a somewhat vulnerable position. Is there an emergency button or some kind of procedures for that person if she sees someone come in who seems threatening?
Yeah, she's got to yell real loud. Unfortunately, we do not have a, a button. But I think what we're looking at is, what we'd like to do, one of the things I'd like to take to the committee is those, the glass vestibule doors, the second set you get to, the hardware's there, we did that during construction, but we don't, I think, I don't think we hooked it up, the electric to it, where the greeter would, could only buzz those people in, because sometimes on busy days, she gets overwhelmed, people just stream through. So if we have that locked, we can do that. And we, certainly, if we were doing the electric for that and put that buzzer in there, we could also have an emergency buzzer. Someplace to alert somebody. Unfortunately, we would have to figure out who we're going to alert with that. You know, it's a good, good point, though, thank you.
We enjoyed a similar presentation from Mr. Kraniek at our Finance and Operations Committee meeting last week, and I'll cover that in a second when we get to committee reports. But at that meeting, I told our principal, Mr. Rogers, I gave him the opportunity to make whatever comments he felt appropriate. And I think, you know, he brings to the table a somewhat unique perspective as someone new to the building, new to the district with overall responsibility for this area, so vary whatever you think is pertinent.
Absolutely. Mr. Kraniek, you know, pointed out many of the initiatives. I think there's a common theme here, and the common theme is to be proactive in terms of the things that we're doing. So upon coming to the school, you come into the school with a new set of eyes, and you see some real possibilities for improvement. Number one, putting the right people in the right place, and it starts with Mr. Kraniek. So as we've, as this initiative has evolved, we're learning more. And so the technology also is advancing as well. I think probably, as he mentioned before, one of the biggest things that we can do is just gain on just the common sense practices that we do within the school. No matter what type of tech- No matter what type of technology you have, no matter how many people you have around the building, if you have students, for instance, open the door for a stranger, that's very difficult to combat. And the reality is, we're living in dangerous times. Mr. Kraniak, during the presentation, talked about how the number of actual school violence episodes has increased and shows no sign of decreasing. So, with that in mind, we know that we cannot stop these things a hundred percent. I mean, I think we'd be fooling ourselves as, as a community, and any community that is. But, there is certainly a lot that we can do, and I'm happy to say that there's a lot that we are doing right now and being proactive, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Superintendent Simic?
I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Kraniak. It's a certain amount of peace of mind that comes with a former resource officer working inside the building, and you bring a level of being down to earth and high degree of common sense and a much higher degree of professionalism to your work, and I appreciate the, the white shirt and the tie today as well.
Thank you.
And the well-done presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I was trying to see what the score was.
Can you pull up just the one? It'll be a hard choice.
Maybe we can use Brady's app to get the score.
There you go. Okay, moving on, I think it's time for board committee reports, and we'll start with the Board Education Committee. Mrs. Snoblen, your report, I know, is going to be in two sections. We'll let you give a report on the committee in the meeting, and then later, a report on the NSBA conference that you attended.
You want it in that order?
Whichever order you would like to give it is fine. It looks like you want to give the NSBA report first, so, great.
I guess so, we're ready for that. A week and a half or so ago, I attended the NSBA Advocacy Institute in Washington, DC. Superintendent Simic went to that as well. Last year was the first time that we even considered sending board members to that conference. Superintendent Simic knew of it from his, his previous life, and he felt that there was a lot of value in having board members attend. So, last year, I was a willing guinea pig and found it quite rewarding, got a lot out of it, and so, I think I was probably the only, the only taker this year, but I want to tell you a little bit about it. First of all, let me just say that this is not a junket, and anyone who's been to Washington, DC in early February knows that it is not a junket. What it is, is an investment. It's an investment that our district is willing to make for the, for the benefit of our students and our community. There's a lot of potential for, for benefits for our district if we can build sort of a culture of a board that is proactive and that gets involved and becomes aware of what's happening in, in public education outside of our delightful but isolated, or insulated So, this summarizes the purposes of the conference. The NSBA is a national organization. What they do is lobby, they're lobbyists, and they're located in Washington, DC, and they lobby on behalf of public school districts. Each year, they designate certain key issues for their lobbying efforts, and they're ones that they believe on the basis of input from their state associations are important for public schools in that legislative session. So, right now, their, their big issues are retaining local control, protecting formula funding for things like special education, reducing unfunded mandates, which we would certainly all like to see, and then reauthorizing ESEA, which is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. We can also say that means fix no child left behind. As I just alluded to, attending this conference helps to raise our profile, and there are some benefits to that. The Illinois Association of School Boards comes to know us as a district that's interested in being actively engaged. We meet with people from the National Association as well. It's beneficial to learn about national issues. Some of them don't apply to us, and that's okay, but I still found it really interesting to learn more about things like, you know, E-Rate, which helps a lot of less affluent districts than ours have access to technology. So, may not be directly relevant to us, but it gives us a better idea of the whole picture of education in this country. Always very interesting to interact with school board members from other places. You know, Illinois, everybody probably knows, has more individual units of government than any other state in the, in the country, and so, we go there, and people say, "Wait, there's one school in your district? How many students? One school?" So, it's, you know, it's different in different places. And then, we do spend a day on, on Capitol Hill. This, in brief, is what we did on Sunday. We had a hot topic session, the E-Rate discussion was part of that. We had a panel discussion presenting alternative views of public education. That, in my opinion, was not as good as it could have been, because it primarily presented the views of people who believed that public education is irreparably broken and should be replaced by vouchers and, and charter schools. So, there was quite a lot of consternation in the audience, and some audience members got up and made some pretty good comments. We had a great presentation from the executive director of Gallup on some Gallup poll results regarding schools. At some point, I would like to get ahold of the video of his presentation and show it to our board. We heard from the Washington Post Education Reporter, who really helped us, I think, see how we are sometimes manipulated in terms of reporting on education issues, who's, who has the loudest voice, is sometimes who has the most money. And we enjoyed a keynote speech by Bob Woodward, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a, in a minute. Monday, we had some sessions on legislative issues and strategies, breakout sessions where we could choose what we wanted to focus on. A panel discussion on school board governance, and then addressed by Dr. Bernice King. She's the youngest daughter of Martin Luther King. She gave a very good talk that was actually very frank, and, and she probably said some things that NSBA didn't really like, like, for example, sixty percent of college freshmen have to take remedial courses in English or math. We don't believe very many of those are coming from Lake Forest High School, but if we care about education in a national sense, that's a pretty important statistic. So, really interesting perspective. And then, on the Tuesday, we go to Capitol Hill and meet with congressional members and staff. Okay, these are mainly pretty bad pictures, the first two I took with my, my phone, but I have to tell you a little story. So, the first one there is our superintendent, Mr. Simic, coming up to the audience participation microphone during Mr. Woodward's talk. And if you'll excuse me, I have to get out my transcript of the interchange.
Did I miss you?
It's worth the wait, everybody.
Okay, so, at the risk of embarrassing all parties involved, I'm going to, to read you this. Mike has a daughter who's a senior at Lake Forest High School, and she is a shining star. She's a terrific kid, and Mike's not the only one who thinks that. So, she thinks that Bob Woodward is a pretty fabulous guy, in fact, cool, she says. So, she was texting him questions to, to ask Mr. Woodward during this presentation. So, Mike got up there and said, "My seventeen-year-old daughter asks, 'What do you feel is the best balance between exercising extreme executive power as opposed to having a weak executive?'" And Bob Woodward said, "That's a smart seventeen-year-old." And our moderator said, "Public school kid." And Mr. Woodward said, "Me too," and the audience went nuts. So, Mike was responsible, or perhaps I should say, Mike's daughter was responsible for the single most, I don't know if I should say enjoyed or powerful, but moment of, of the presentation that day. So, that was, that was pretty fun. And I didn't mention your daughter by name, so hopefully, she retains a tiny bit of anonymity. In the upper, oh, so, the, the purple one, that is Mr. Woodward, as he was responding to that question. Upper right, that's where we were meeting with Brad Schneider, who is the congressman for the, the tenth district. He spent a half hour with us, which is very unusual. Usually, if you get ten minutes with your actual congressperson, that's pretty good. Bottom right is our meeting with Senator Kirk, and that also was a fairly lengthy meeting. And then, bottom left, that's our entire Illinois delegation. There's, there's not a whole lot of us, we're standing outside of Congressman Kirk's office. So, it was a pretty interesting day. Last year, we didn't get to meet with any of the legislators, because they weren't in, in Washington at the time, so we met with, you know, like seventeen-year-old staff members, or so it seemed. This year, we mostly actually did meet with, with elected officials, which was very interesting. Different styles, different approaches, none of them, you know, volunteered to jump right on board with the NSBA agenda. None of them were at all reassuring about ESEA being reauthorized, but we did feel that they were listening to us and that they understand that we would like to have channels of communication so that they can understand that what they do has an impact on us here at, at home in their district. This is the exact same slide that I used last year for ESEA, because nothing has changed. It still hasn't been reauthorized. It is still true that virtually no high schools in Illinois will be able to meet the adequate yearly progress anymore. It was a well-intentioned law that was flawed, and we're, we're kind of at that, at that critical point where nobody can actually meet the standards anymore. So, the National School Board Association supports reauthorization, but they have some proposed improvements in it, and then also fewer federal mandates. It's pretty interesting to go to this conference with Mike, because he's really, really knowledgeable, and he speaks very well, and he has lots of great specific examples of how there are federal mandates that eat up a lot of staff time for our staff and don't provide any kind of benefit that any of us will actually see in our lifetimes. So, he was, he was very helpful in that regard, and now that we have him as part of the Illinois delegation instead of Michigan, our Illinois Association is pretty impressed with him and always wants him to speak for them. This is just a brief overview of the kinds of local control issues that NSBA is talking about, and I am not going to read them to you, but they are examples of why it's so important that we make sure that our legislators in Washington know that local control is important to our, to our local communities. So, here's what we learned in a nutshell, it's actually a pretty big nutshell, but there is a battle going on in public education. It's a little hard to see that right here, because we haven't had any, anyone coming trying to start a charter school or any, we haven't had a great deal of the outside influence in terms of legislation that a lot of districts are having, but we saw some good examples of that in some other states when we were there. So, it's important for us to know about that. Over the course of the three days we were there, we heard people espousing really based, three different, very basic opinions about public education. Some speakers felt that they were broken and needed to be replaced with some other system. Some speakers believe that they, that there were improvements that needed to be made and that that was certainly possible. NSBA, to a large extent, feels that they have a PR problem, which is probably true. We don't talk enough about what is good about public schools. We hear a lot about what's wrong with public schools. We don't have a perfect system. None of the schools that are profiled in the Smarter Kids book that Superintendent Simic was talking about have a perfect system either. We all have things that we can learn from each other, but the bottom line, at least in my opinion, and I, and I think this was the point they were trying to make, is that it's, it's almost more of a political debate than an educational one. You know, there are a lot of people who have political motives who are proposing various solutions. None of those are really focused on, on the students or on what educators know to be true. So, also, a remarkable lack of, of data in, in some respects. So, it's, and I think that was kind of the point of Bob Woodward's talk, too, is that Washington is all about politics, and education shouldn't be all about politics. We have the most decentralized and inequitable system of any developed country, but, on the other hand, we're very large, and centralization can lead to loss of local control and flexibility. We also learned that school board members can be proactive. NSBA does encourage board members to reach out directly to their legislators, and once you've been to the conference, you feel a little more comfortable doing that. You have talking points, and the legislators might even remember your name. But, and I don't mean to this to be unnecessarily pessimistic, but the legislature is dysfunctional. They are not going to reauthorize ESEA, because they're really busy with a lot of other stuff. They aren't going to provide any more money for public schooling. So, given that they aren't going to address inequities, the best we can do as school board members is to make sure that we're doing the very best we can for every student who is in our, in our jurisdiction. And that's what our board tries to do, that's what our staff tries to do, and I know that's what our teachers want to do as well. And that is it. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Apparently not.
I certainly hope that we'll have a volunteer to attend next year. I'm, I'm, I'll still be on the board, but I'll be a very lame duck at that point, and I don't think it would be a wise investment to send me again, but I'm certainly thinking about some energetic, you know, young board member, like maybe Mr. Powers or, you know, Mr. Schreiber. You would definitely get a lot out of it, so, thank you.
If he has a student going into high school, he's a heck of a lot younger than I am.
Yes, ma'am, please. Do you have an education committee report?
Okay, I do have an education committee report. It's shorter, and there are no slides. Our education committee met yesterday, and the two, well, the main topic of conversation was the, the proposed New School Day Initiative. We had heard in advance that we, well, let me put it this way. That committee meeting was scheduled so that we could hear what perhaps was going to be brought to the board today. We now know that there was nothing that was going to be able to be brought to the board today. I think all of us were quite disappointed. School board members, for the most part, are not educators, we are volunteers. We're people who live in the community and who care a lot about children and about education. That's why we're on the board. So, when our staff came to us, when our administrators came to us and said, "Look, there's something we really want to do. We think it's going to be really good for the students, it's going to help to reduce stress, it's going to give them more opportunities to pursue the things that they really care about, it's going to allow them to pursue the things that make it worth going to school in the morning. We think it's going to be better for our teachers, too. It's going to give them more time to work together, it's going to give them an opportunity to really exercise their professionalism. This is what they're trained for, this is what they're good at, it's going to give them a lot more flexibility and the ability to work together." And anytime a change like that is proposed, we know that it's, it's going to be difficult. People, it takes time to get used to things, a lot of changes are kind of scary, but we thought this was a pretty exciting prospect. So, we all know from Principal Rogers' report, and from what Mr. Simic said, that everybody really tried, everybody did their best to work together on it, it didn't come together. That's really disappointing. The very critical thing, I think, is that we not allow our students to be, to be pawns in grown-up games. So, nobody's going to play any grown-up games. Our students deserve the best from all of us. We need to move forward and do the things that, that we already know we can and are planning to do that are going to improve our students' experiences, and, and allow our teachers to do their very best for the students, because we know that's what they want. So, the other brief topic of conversation at that meeting, because we spent a lot of time on the first one, was the one-to-one computing initiative, and that is actually a pretty exciting thing that we think is going to bring a lot of benefits to our students. We were, as somebody mentioned, we had a full-day meeting on Sunday, the board did, for mission visions and goals, and one of the things that we did in preparation for that was to watch a video that talked about problem-based learning, and that was the first time I fully understood this one-to-one computing thing. It's like, we have a lot of computers in our school, and, you know, kids mostly have devices anyway, why do we need this? Well, when you see it in action, and you see these kids working collaboratively in a group, and they've all got their, their tablets there, and they say, they're problem-solving, and they're brainstorming, and they say, "Well, what if we tried this?" Immediately, they can be checking on whatever this is and, and, you know, evaluating whether it would be a good next step. So, it, it creates that continuity. So it creates that continuity and sort of a fluid process. And so that helped me a lot to see why it was beneficial. And then I think that was probably about it, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Snoblen. And I think it's fair to say the Schedule Initiative was a learning experience for everybody, as we spoke about earlier, and it's up to us to take advantage of that learning. I think it's a great disservice... I've said this before, to name this initiative, the One-to-One Computing Initiative, and I continue to challenge Principal Rogers to come up with something better. He gave it a pretty good shot, but we found out somebody had already stolen our thunder there, our creativity, and so I'm going to give you a second chance. But it's way beyond just a digital device for every student. It's a whole new methodology in terms of teaching and learning and collaborative-type effort that is going to permeate the whole system. Move on to the Finance and Operations Committee report. The committee did meet last Wednesday on a particularly snowy and frigid morning, and I know most of you are numb to those events now, but that was last Wednesday. We met for a couple of hours, covering several orders of business. One, or several, actually, we'll talk about tonight. One of those was a request from a neighboring district for a tuition-paying student to come into our transitions program, and I won't comment on that anymore because we will cover it as an approval item. But suffice it to say, the committee recommended to the board that the administration's recommendation be accepted. We spent quite a bit of time going over with Mr. Alvis, our essentially chief financial officer, and Jen, who happens to be here tonight. The five-year financial projections, as we've covered before, we've gone from sort of an in-house financial forecasting program to a web-based system from an outside vendor. We've been quite pleased with the progress there. I think it's fair to say we went through significant detail in covering both historical and current revenue, expense, and capital projections, what the major drivers were in each of those arenas, and, bottom line, what we projected for our fund balances at the end of each of the next five years, given the many contingencies that we could still face going down the road. We discussed, as one of those, the impact of new pension laws and what changes... what further changes that system may bring. We talked about recovery in our local real estate market, as a, for instance, and the hopeful swelling of new properties coming onto the tax rolls and therefore greater revenues to help us meet some of our budget challenges. We had a thorough presentation from Mr. Kraniak, similar to what he made here tonight, so I won't spend any time going over that. We considered a facility rental request from a for-profit outside firm who wanted to use some of our classroom facilities on the weekend. The committee did not think that was a good idea. Neither did the administration, and we don't recommend pursuing it, so we won't spend any more time dealing with that. And then lastly, Carol White, our Director of Facilities and Grounds, announced that the district had received two Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity grants from the state of Illinois totaling $130,000, and an ISBE, Illinois State Board of Education, maintenance grant in the amount of $50,000. And these grants are being used to offset planned maintenance projects at East Campus. So the meeting lasted about two hours, and if anyone had any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. Hearing none, we will move on to action items. The first is the approval of this tuition-based transition student that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Block. And Mrs. Fagel, would you be kind enough to address this with us here?
Good evening. The administration is requesting the board to approve an arrangement between Township High School District 113 and Lake Forest High School District 115. As you know, District 115 operates its own transition program, which is a program for students with individualized education plans, IEPs, who qualify for continued years of education between the ages of eighteen and literally the day before they turn twenty-two. We are unique in that we house and own our own program. It is not common. It's a niche, and it's really pretty amazing. It's a new program for our district. I believe it's only maybe a year and a half, two years old, and I have the pleasure of working directly with Kim Keun, who oversees that program. So there are limited opportunities for young adults in that age range to find appropriate programs with appropriate peer groups who have similar needs. We have a partnership, of course, with our surrounding districts. In fact, oftentimes, our students in that program have social outings with kids from Stevenson's Transition Program or other local programs. This particular instance, they are requesting they have a student who completed his time at Deerfield High School, who was... Whose particular needs would fit really nicely with our program on a part-time basis, half-day, five days a week. So Kim talked with myself, with Jennifer. We talked about it at Cabinet. It was talked about at the Finance Committee. The most important thing that we considered, obviously, is just to ensure that our district's students' needs are met first and fully, and that any additional cost, if there was any, in taking this additional student from out of district would be absorbed by District 113, not by District 115. And all of those boxes were checked. The students' IEP team met and decided that if it was possible, they would love this opportunity for the young man, and so we are requesting approval. This is an arrangement that has a thirty-day trial period so that the family, the student, the educators can all come back together, make sure that it's working well, and it would continue through the end of the year and then be reevaluated for next year. Of course, again, our students' programming needs, staffing needs, come first. Any questions I can answer?
Just curious about... Sorry? What sort of precedent you anticipate from, be it 113 or other nearby districts that recognize our niche, and then how we determine not being exclusive or selective and...
Right. We talked about that a little bit and decided that we don't anticipate this becoming a frequent request. Again, the number of students per district, per high school district, that take advantage of continued services from eighteen to twenty-two is very small to begin with. And then there are other programs. They're just not usually owned by a district. They're usually owned by a consortium like NSSED or CEDOL. So we really felt that this wouldn't kind of... You know, not that we wouldn't want to be known for an excellent transition program, but kind of a bigger issue. We felt that this was a unique circumstance. It's doable right now. We're committing to it on a short-time basis. We don't feel that it will lead to a kind of a whole slew of requests.
I'm just curious. I have an insurance question. If anything should happen to this student while he's under our supervision, would our insurance be responsible for him or his home district?
I'm going to look to Jennifer for that.
We've had these situations come up where we have shared students or shared activities. We are in the same insurance cooperative as Deerfield Highland Park 113, so it would not be an issue.
Any other questions?
How many students do we have in our program? I know it goes up and down based on...
It fluctuates. I want to say we currently have between eight and ten at the most. And then we also have something else very unique called a fifth-year services program. This is new, and again, it's for students who don't necessarily need that full-time program, ages eighteen to twenty-two, but aren't quite ready to take that next step. And we have about two students enrolled in that, and that's also housed here at West Campus. So between eight and ten, and again, certain students will age out. We can kind of predict that path. And their day and week consists of a combination of job site training, community outings, and academic work. It's pretty awesome.
We had a tour of our transition program, I don't know, several months ago now, within the last year, anyway, and it seemed really impressive, and the students are doing some really nice work and really learning some life skills, so it looks really good.
I'm very impressed with it coming in from out of the district and seeing it in action, and only in its second year. It's extremely well-run.
Just one additional question. Just the funds that are generated. It's about fifteen hundred a month. Do those funds go into the general fund, or are they going to be earmarked for anything specific?
They'll be recorded just in the general educational fund revenues. So they are not earmarked, but they will just go to the bottom line.
Back into the pot.
Hearing no further questions. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the tuition-based transition student.
Second. Thank you. We need a roll call vote. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion was approved, and we move on to our second action item, the approval of the 2013 through 2018 school holiday calendar, which we discussed in the special meeting immediately preceding this regular meeting. Mr. Henrichson?
So thank you. If you are amenable to approving the use of these legal holidays for school attendance in the future through 2018, we would appreciate that flexibility.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the 2013 to 2018 school holiday calendar as presented.
A second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Block, then, if you're willing, I could go through a quick update as far as how we're going to make up the four missing days.
I think that would be a great idea. I suspect on many parents' minds, as well as staff.
So as you know, we've had four school closing days due to extreme cold, and I'll just walk through the proposal. This doesn't need action now because we're still in the throes of winter. We still may have more days, so this is a proposal. The Thursday, April 17th is currently on the calendar as a Teacher Institute Day. We would change that Thursday, April 17th, to a full day of school. So that is one of the four. Thursday, June 5th, is currently the last day of school, last day of exams. We would continue on with the second makeup day, Friday, June 6th, being the last day of finals, and no change to graduation. So then the third and fourth days are made up thus, not with student attendance, but by counting a parent-teacher conference day. And this is allowed by statute. We build this in to our calendar, so we have a little bit of flexibility. And then the fourth day, we would ask you to forgive. And the state will allow this, but we will not get General State Eight, and that amounts to around fifteen to seventeen hundred dollars. So it's a pretty small amount for our district. The advantage to this is that then we won't be asking our students to come back Monday to finish off their final exams. At this point, this is a proposal because, for example, if we did have one more school closing days, then we would probably likely suggest that we go into Monday and Tuesday. As long as we have to bridge that weekend for the final exams, we probably would want to continue on with the student attendance day. These are the same. We would ask that our teachers fulfill all of their contractual days, so the day that we don't have students would be a bonus to us because we would use it for many of the professional development endeavors that we're looking to do as a Teacher Institute Day. So no action is needed, but be interested in your comments and your guidance.
And we certainly hope this doesn't happen, but if we had another snow day or cold day and you had to go to school on the Monday and Tuesday, the ninth and tenth, would graduation still take place on the seventh because the seniors aren't taking finals anyway?
Yes, I think we're pretty firm on that date because of the number of people that travel in and are expecting to be here on that date.
We've also scheduled no rain on that date.
We'll just have to make sure we have enough staff to shovel the remaining snowbanks out of the front lawn before we can do graduation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to our final action item, which is approval of our Human Resources Report. Mr. Simic?
Yes, Mr. Block, I recommend the Human Resources Report be approved as presented.
Thank you. Board members, do I have a second? Oh, excuse me. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mr. Powers?
No.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
We have a forum, so motion carries.
Thank you. The motion carries, which brings us to our consent agenda. Board members, are there any items that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda? Please say so now. Hearing none. Can I have a motion, please, for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as posted.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We had no FOIA requests in the past month, and we do have a list of announcements. Friday, February 14th, coincidentally, also Valentine's Day, is a tri-district in-service day. There will be no school. Monday, February 17th, is President's Day. No school. February 18th, Mr. Simic mentioned earlier, these Beyond the Book Community Conversations regarding the book. We're asking as many people in the community to read as possible. Will take place at 1:00 PM. On the 20th of February, another similar community meeting will take place at 7:00 PM, for those who can't make a daytime meeting. On February 26th at noon, there is a community meeting to discuss our Mission Vision Goals process, which you heard some discussion about tonight, and the Transformation Group will be there to help facilitate that. So all those in the community who would like to input into this process, this strategic process that we only do once a decade or so, I would strongly advise you come. Again, February 26th at noon and February 27th at 7:00 PM in the evening. And I think both of those are at the Renon Moore Auditorium. Is that correct? Ann? No, right here. Oh, I'm sorry. Right here at West Campus in the boardroom. Thank you, Ann. And then lastly, on Tuesday, March 11th, is our next regular Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom. Any other items for discussion, Mr. Simic or Mr. Rogers or others? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we're adjourned.
And you say your mission?